Welcome to the Rensselaer County Legislature. This portion of the legislative meeting is for presentations of those resolutions that were passed in the previous month. And we ask that the legislators come forward with their presentations when called, and those people being honored and their guests or family can also come down with them as well. The first resolution we're presentation, a resolution we're going to go over is Resolution P. 275, a resolution honoring Rensselaer County veteran Edward George Whited. And would Legislator Harrington come forward? And any other legislators that want to be with?
Come on down.
He's over here. He's also a Reverend. Be good.
Okay. I get to read this whole thing. "It is consistent with the duties of the legislative body to recognize the achievements of the citizens of Rensselaer County. We acknowledge with respect and admiration individuals who bravery and dedication have been so valuable to our community. And whereas Rensselaer County owes a great debt to men and women of our loyal armed forces, so bravely stand ready to preserve our American heritage. And whereas Edward George Whited was born October 29th, 1942, in Albany, New York, to the late George Elias Whited Sr. and Gwendolyn Ida Thorne. And whereas Edward enlisted in the United States Air Force on October 13th, 1961. And whereas during his enlistment, Edward attended multiple training in academics, eight weeks of basic military training, NCO Academy for six weeks, Senior NCO Academy for eight weeks, First Sergeant Academy for five weeks. And whereas while serving, Edward did on-the-job training for the Command and Staff Officer, Small Permanent Communications and Display Sergeant, Sergeant Operator, and a Security Supervisor. And whereas Edward was a proud recipient of many awards and medals. The Air Force Commendation Medal with four bronze oak leaf clusters, the Air Force Achievement Medal, the Air Force Good Conduct Medal with one silver oak leaf cluster, and four bronze oak leaf clusters, a Small Arms Expert Markmanship Ribbon, and a Silver Star, NCO Professional Military Education Ribbon, Humanitarian Service Medal, the Air Force Longevity Service Award Ribbon with one silver oak leaf cluster, the National Defense Service Medal, the Air Force Overseas Long Tour Ribbon with one bronze oak leaf cluster, the Air Force Short Tour Ribbon with one bronze star oak leaf cluster, the Air Force Training Ribbon, the Vietnam Service Medal with one silver star, the Air Force Distinguished Presidential Concitiation, the A.D. Outstanding Unit Award with Valor Device on one silver oak leaf cluster and two bronze oak leaf clusters, and the Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal. And whereas Edward served his way through the ranks, becoming First Sergeant for seven years and held the rank of Senior Master Sergeant until his separation from the Air Force on October 31st, 1989. And whereas on October 7th, 1964, in the Broadway United Methodist Church in Rensselaer, New York, Edward married his wife Ellen Jean Whited Bentley. He is the father of two children, Faith McBelfry, and the late Russell E. Whited, the brother of George Elias Whited Jr. and Ronnie Davis. And whereas Edward is currently employed with the City of Rensselaer Schools District as a bus driver. And whereas Edward is a member of the Independent Order of Odd Fellows, the Air Force Sergeants Association, the NCO Officers Association, and the Air Force Association. Now therefore be it resolved that this legislative body does hereby acknowledge the sacrifices these great men and their families have made and continue to make for the ideals for which this nation stands, fully confident that his achievements and contributions will live on to serve as a legacy for all. And be further resolved that the Clerk of the Legislature hereby direct to transmit a copy of this resolution suitably engrossed through Edward G. I was in the military for a while, back in the 60s, and my uncle gave me the best advice I ever got. He said, "You may be a brand-new Second Lieutenant, you may be an officer, but there's one person you want to listen to, and that's the First Sergeant. Keep your mouth shut and listen. Don't ever tell the First Sergeant what to do." And that's the God's honest truth. We had some pretty darn good sergeants that taught me my way through the ranks. And I want to say thank you for your service and congratulations here. Would you like to say something?
I would just like to say thank you, Ed, and your wife, for coming down. You know, one thing I can say is I see Ed every morning. He's driving a school bus, and there's no better person we can have our youth with than a man who's a member of the cloth, as well as a school bus driver. That doesn't hurt at all. And I got to say, he's got some of the best, well-minded students that I've ever seen in most cases, so he does a great job. He's very, and him and his wife were also very active in the Rensselaer Senior Center. And, you know, obviously your activities and your active lifestyle through the military and up till now has shown that you're the quality of man that deserves such a presentation, and I want to thank you both for all that you've done. Now you please stay over there.
Unaccustomed to speaking as I am, I will not give you a sermon this morning. When I retired from the United States Air Force, I had a Chief Master Sergeant tell me, "When you get out, do something." I says, "What do you mean, 'do something'?" He says, "Don't go home and put your feet up and say, 'I've done my time, I'm ready to retire. Do something, because if you don't, you're dead.'" Let's see. I was a security supervisor for 17 years, I was a minister for 17 years, and I've been driving a school bus for three years. I'm doing the best that I can to keep myself busy, and I love serving Rensselaer. I think it's a wonderful county, and I am proud to be a member of it. And thank you very much for all you-
I want to say thank you, and thank you for your service for the legislature.
Thank you so very much. That's beautiful.
Thank you.
Now, there's a man with more clusters than an election night fire, that's for sure. He's well-qualified. Thank you again, Ed, and your wife. Next, we have P. 276-18, Resolution Commending Jim Hurbert Upon Receiving the 2018 New York Rural Water Association Operator of the Year. And that was, will be by Mr. Petiri and Mr. Wasaki.
It's our honor to recognize Jim for his achievements over the past many years, not just 2018. Resolution commending Jim Hurbert Upon His Receiving the 2018 New York Rural Water Association Operator of the Year. Whereas, a great county is only as great as those persons who give commendable service to their communities, whether through participation in volunteer programs, or through distinctive personal achievements in their professional or other endeavors, or simply through a lifetime of good sincerity. And whereas, such service, which is truly a lifeblood of the community and the county, so often goes unrecognized, unrewarded. And whereas Jim Hurbert is such an individual who is worthy of an esteem of his community as well as his county of Rensselaer. And whereas Jim was recognized by New York State Rural Water Association, Incorporated, at their 39th Annual Meeting as Operator, 2018 Operator of the Year. And whereas, there are seven same New York Rural Water Association chapters in New York, and Operator was picked from each chapter. And NYWEA capital chapter consists of the following 16 New York Counties: St. Lawrence, Franklin, Clinton, Essex, Hamilton, Fulton, Montgomery, Schuhary, Green, Albany, Columbia, Schenectady, Warren, Washington, Saratoga, and Rensselaer. Now therefore it be resolved that Jim, that the Rensselaer County Legislature hereby recognizes and commends Jim Hurbert Lead Water Operator for Housick Falls for his distinguished and conscientious and faithful service to Rensselaer County, and wishes him well in all his future endeavors. And there, and be it further resolved that the Clerk of the Legislature hereby direct, transmit a copy of this resolution suitably engrossed to Jim Hurbert. I know we've had a lot of issues with our water in the last few years, so it's really good that we have Jim up there getting things, trying to get them figured out. Thanks, Jim. You want to say anything? You want to say anything, Bruce?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
How many years you been living up there now?
Going on 16.
16. 16 years ago, Jim brought his family to a small community where he thought it'd be nice, quiet, and the last year and a half, he's had more television cameras and microphones shoved than his face than you could believe. And he has showed fantastic restraint, composure, and class, and more than anything else. As a face of Housick Falls, I want to thank for doing an excellent job. Thank you.
Say something.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank everybody here, all the legislators, the chairman, especially my wife and kids, who've been through a lot. And Rich Elder, who's been there the whole time through this last, what, 2014, through all the water crises that we've been dealing with. And without all these people, Jeff, Bruce, we wouldn't be where we are now, and headed to the right direction with hopefully a new water source soon. But I'd just like to thank everybody, and thank you again.
Boy, there's no doubt that we've had some water problems, especially up in the Housick area. And talk about baptism by fire, we've been leading the way for the whole state on underground water contamination and what can be done about it. And I can't say that I'm happy, can't say, but I'm happy that, or thrilled that we have one of the best guys able to deal with that situation here in our county. So thank you again. Next, we have P. 277-18, Resolution Commending the City of Troy Police Cadet Post 4102 for their commitment to introducing a new generation of law enforcement. Presentation by Legislator Kim Ash McPherson and Legislator Chuck Peter.
Anyone else want to like to come up? Hi, how are you?
Very impressive.
I like this. Congratulations, okay. So this is a resolution commending the City of Troy Police Cadet Post 4102 for their commitment to introducing a new generation of law enforcement. Whereas it is a duly duty of this body to recognize and applaud the hard work and efforts of individuals and groups that dedicate their time and experience to educating young people and providing them with positive role models. And whereas the City of Troy New York Police Cadet Post 4102 was formed in 2011 by Troy Police Sergeant Randall French and Officer Robert Godet, and in part of the Northeast Regional Law Enforcement Educational Association nearly. Whereas the Cadet Post is designed to serve up to 22 youths between the ages of 14 and 20 who are interested in a career in law enforcement. And whereas the Cadet Post motto is "Developing Youth Through Service and Such," cadets volunteer for community service events in the City of Troy and beyond, including assisting the Rensselaer County Stop DWI Program, which sponsors the Cadet Post. And whereas, on April 7th, nope, whereas the Post currently has 15 cadets and three cadet sergeants and one cadet captain, and has eight volunteer advisors, including seven sworn police officers and one civilian teacher from Questar III, where meetings are held twice a month. And whereas, on April 7th, 2018, Cadet Captain Carolyn Bristol, Cadet Sergeant Morgan Freehand Littlejohn, Cadet Sergeant Brianna DeBracke, Cadet Danielle Perez, along with probationary cadets Ryan Meyer, Jocelyn Quinn, Brandon Cunningham, attended their first nearly high-stress event in Windsor, Connecticut. And whereas during the event, cadets were placed in high-stress situations such as foot pursuits, aggressive encounters, and other nerve-wracking situations that police officers face every day. The cadets performed very well, earning several honors and medals in their first competition, and their poise and professionalism was noted by the event organizers and leaders of other cadet posts. And whereas the training received, the Cadet Post has helped produce graduates who are now Troy police officers, Troy firefighters, Rensselaer County correction officers, active members of the U.S. Army, Air Force, Marines, National Guard, and many other areas of law enforcement. Now therefore it be it resolved that the Rensselaer County Legislature commends the City of Troy Police Cadet Post 4102 for their hard work mentoring the youth of Rensselaer County and encouraging those young people that are interested in law enforcement to join this successful, successful, excuse me, program that has produced many fine men and women who will greatly benefit our community and beyond. I would just like to say, I am from a family of police, and what you guys go through is tremendous, your families and yourselves. You put yourselves out on the line every day, and I commend you for this. There's nothing more where you go on to becoming firemen, police officers, whatever you choose to do, this is a great start, and I commend you all for doing this. Thank you.
I'll just give a brief aside. I grew up with Ralph Southworth. He grew up on the backside of my farm. Given my employment, I wasn't able to travel much. But this spring, I took a trip with Ralph. And as I'm going through TSA, I'm kind of bumbling, I'm not used to traveling, and I look over and I see Ralph with a TSA agent laughing at me. And it was a little disconcerting, but as I come through the line, I find out that that agent had come through the cadet program. So it's a testament to what this program does, that we're not just training out officers for Troy, but these people are going on to reach far, far greater communities other than just our own. It's a testament to what they have to work with, about how well they do compared to other cadet posts that have far greater funding, and I just want to say I couldn't be more proud of this group of people.
If I could just offer a couple of words. I too have a close tie to the Troy Police Department, and I appreciate everything that the gentlemen and women of the Police Department do. But I would like to point out one cadet in particular who's standing here very stoic, and I've known her for a very, very long time, Morgan Freehand Littlejohn. Ever since I've known her, her mom had said to me, "I'd like, I'd like to you to, you know, maybe your husband could talk to my daughter about law enforcement." And ever since then, I knew she was involved in the cadet program. I know she's very serious about it, but I remember her when she was, I got a little crack out of her, when she was playing in my backyard. And this isn't just a club, this isn't just a group of kids that kind of get together and put on a uniform. They do participate in our DWI programs that we have at Hudson Valley. I think it's once a month. These folks are administering breathalyzer tests to some of our participants, and they're very involved. So I want to congratulate all of you, and certainly to the leaders of the program, you're doing a great job. Thank you. Ralph, would you like to come up and say something?
Uh, can I, Captain?
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Carolyn Bristol. I am the Cadet Captain for the Troy Police Cadet Post. I would like to thank the Rensselaer County Legislature for inviting us here today. The Troy Police Cadet Post continues to partake in numerous hours of training and community service at the benefit of the City of Troy. We truly appreciate the recognition and acknowledgement of our hard work and dedication to the community. The Troy Police Cadet Post was established in 2011 and was designed for youth between the ages of 14 and 20 who are interested in a career in law enforcement. Cadets are educated in police-related topics and assist the Troy Police Department in many community events. The Cadet Post is also sponsored by Rensselaer County Stop DWI. As part of this sponsorship, cadets assist Stop DWI program in administration of victims' impact panels. Cadets also partake in many competitions every year against other cadets and explorers from posts in our area and also outside of New York State. We have been fortunate enough to have earned substantial recognition at many of these events. Lastly, I would like to thank the Department Administration and our post advisors, as we would not be here or have been given this opportunity without them. Thank you.
This is you guys, congratulations. I'm going to give this to you, these are for you guys, congratulations. Anybody else want to say anything? Okay, they're all set. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. Excellent. We couldn't be more proud of them. Thank you for that resolution. Good job by everybody. Next, we have Resolution P. 279-18, Resolution Commending Sergeant John Keeler Upon Receiving the 2018 John J. Gibney Memorial Award. Presentation by Mr. Grimm, Ms. Dornan, Mr. Burns, Mr. Fleming, and Ms. Sullivan Tita. They're not here? Oh, I'm sorry. There's a question mark, I didn't thought they might have came in. Okay, we'll move that on then. We'll go to the next resolution. P. 321-18, Resolution Honoring Rensselaer County Veteran Joel A. Bluff by Legislator Ken Harrington. Our veteran, veteran. And any other legislators that may want to come up?
I'll skip a couple of "whereas's," but I will say that Lieutenant Colonel Joel A. Bluff listed in the New York Army National Guard as a member of the 105th Military Police Company in Troy, New York, in August, 1991. I looked at that date, I said, "Well, if I'd have stayed in the Army, I'd have retired 30 years a day he got in." I said, "And he's getting out." That must mean I'm getting old, right? Whereas Joel reported to Fort McLemone, Alabama, completing basic training in military police school, where he was selected as platoon honor graduate. And whereas in November, 1993, Joel accompanied his unit to Fort Clayton, Panama for annual training. Later, his unit became Detachment One, Headquarters and Headquarters Company, 27th Brigade Combat Team in Albany. And whereas after serving for eight years as a sergeant, Joel had four-year break, had a four-year break deciding to re-enlist after the attack on 9/11. And whereas on July, 2003, Joel received his commission as a First Lieutenant in the Judge Advocate General's Corps. And whereas throughout his many years of service, Joel's assignments have included Trial Counsel, Joint Forces Headquarters Latham, New York, Trial Counsel, 27th Infantry Brigade Combat Team, and Combined Joint Task Force Phoenix in Kabul, Afghanistan, Command Judge Advocate, 42nd Combat Aviation Brigade, Latham, New York, Senior Defense Counsel, Trial Defense Services, Trial Counsel and Deputy Staff Judge Advocate, 42nd Infantry Division, Troy, New York, and Staff Judge Advocate, 53rd Truth Command, Camp Smith, New York. And whereas Joel has attended Judge Advocate's General Officers Basic Course, the Judge Advocate General Officers Advanced Course, and the United States Army Command and General Staff College. And whereas Joel is the proud recipient of many awards and medals, Joint Services Commendation Medal, the Army Reserve Component Achievement Medal with two bronze oak leaves, the National Defense Service Medal with one campaign star, the Afghanistan Campaign Medal with one campaign star, the Global War on Terrorism Services Medal, the Armed Forces Reserve Medal with bronze, with a bronze hourglass and M device, the Army NCO Professional Development Ribbon, the Army Overseas Ribbon, the Army Overseas Ribbon's second award, the NATO Medal, the French Commendation Medal, the New York Long and Faithful Services Medal, the New York Aid to Civilian Authority Medal, the New York Exercise Support Ribbon, and New York Humane Services to New York Medal and Bronze Oak Leaf. And whereas Joel is also the proud recipient of civilian, of civilian awards, the New York State Fire Investigators Association 2017 Arson Prosecutor of the Year, the New York Humane Association 11th Annual Tony, Tony Hano Memorial Award for Outstanding Performance in the Field of Humane Law Enforcement, and the Troy Lodge of Elks Number 4141 Public Safety Recognition Award. And whereas Joel is currently still serving in the New York State Army National Guard, where he's scheduled to retire at the end of July. So this was when we passed the resolution. 23 years. And whereas Joel was elected Rensselaer County District Attorney in 2014, in which he is still currently serving. And whereas in 2012, Joel co-founded Heroes at Home in Rensselaer County, a state-funded peer monitoring program for veterans and their families. He is also a member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, the American Legion, the Jewish War Veterans of America, the Rensselaer County Honor of Deceased Veterans Committee, and I appreciate him showing up every month, the National Defense Rifle Association, the New York State Rifle and Pistol Association, the Rensselaer County Bar Association, the District Attorneys Association of the State of New York, and the National District Attorneys Association. Now therefore be it resolved that this legislative body does hereby acknowledge the sacrifices these great men and their families have made and continue to make for the ideals, ideals for which this nation stands, fully confident that his achievements and contributions will live on to serve as a legacy for all. I just want to say thank you, Joel, for your service, and his service not only continued in military life, but also in public life, which is, you know, you got, that's really great. I mean, you spent all your life pretty much in service to our country and to our local families, so thank you, Joel, and you still are. Thank you, Joel. Anyone else want to speak before I call Joel? Joel? we passed the resolution. 23 years. And whereas Joel was elected Rensselaer County District Attorney in 2014, in which he is still currently serving. And whereas in 2012, Joel co-founded Heroes at Home in Rensselaer County, a state-funded peer monitoring program for veterans and their families. He is also a member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, the American Legion, the Jewish War Veterans of America, the Rensselaer County Honor of Deceased Veterans Committee, and I appreciate him showing up every month, the National Defense Rifle Association, the New York State Rifle and Pistol Association, the Rensselaer County Bar Association, the District Attorneys Association of the State of New York, and the National District Attorneys Association. Now therefore, be it resolved that this legislative body does hereby acknowledge the sacrifices these great men and their families have made and continue to make for the ideals for which this nation stands, fully confident that his achievements and contributions will live on to serve as a legacy for all. I just want to say thank you, Joel, for your service. And his service not only continued in military life, but also in public life, which is, you know, that's really great. I mean, you spent all your life pretty much in service to our country and to our local families. So, thank you, Joel, and you still are. Thank you, Joel. Anyone else want to speak before I call Joel?
Well, it's rare that a lawyer's at a loss for words, but I'd like to thank the legislature, Mr. Chairman, thank you, everybody who's here tonight, listening to everything that was just read. I'm starting to feel old myself, but it's been a tremendous honor for me to serve. It's a little bittersweet. I just retired about a week and a half ago from the New York Army National Guard. I'm still getting used to that feeling, having done it for so long. And you do need to keep busy, as somebody wise just said before me. And luckily, I am very busy. My family couldn't be here tonight. They were at the retirement ceremony that I had up in Latham last week or so ago, but with work and sleepovers and whatnot, they had some prior commitments. But it is truly an honor to serve, and I am going to miss being in the National Guard. There are some of the finest men and women that I've ever known, that I've ever served alongside, that I had the opportunity to learn from and to share some amazing experiences with, that I wouldn't trade for the world. Some of the most difficult times that one could possibly imagine, certainly going to war and being away from your family, but it's all worth it because we live in the greatest country on earth, and that's owed to the men and women who I served with, and especially the men and women who did not come home with me and in prior wars as well. So, I appreciate very much from the bottom of my heart this honor tonight. I wish there were every veteran up here with me who serves and has served in order to receive that type of recognition because I understand the sacrifices that they and their family members make, going above and beyond all the time to ensure that we get to enjoy this wonderful life that we have in the best country on the planet. So, I'm very grateful and very humbled by this honor, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. A. Bluff. Ken, as well. Another great job. You'd be clustered out by the end of the night. Next, we have P. 32318, Resolution Recognizing Alana Carroll as a Rensselaer County Legislature, July 2018, Young Outstanding Leader of the Month. Is she here today?
Yes, she is.
Yes, she is. Thank you. Come on down. Welcome. Any other legislators that may want to come up as well? Please do.
Yeah, come on up.
I see that proud smile.
So, I'm very proud to speak about Alana tonight. It's a resolution recognizing Alana Carroll as the Rensselaer County Legislature's July of 2018 Young Outstanding Leader of the Month. She actually couldn't be here last month because she was in France in an exchange program. I'm not going to read this whole thing because we've been through all these and they're very similar, but Alana's an All-Star, and I don't want to cheat you. She's a recent graduate of Avril Park. She's an outstanding student. She's won many, many different awards. She's also an All-Star track and field athlete. In fact, not only is she one of the best from our school, Avril Park, not only is she one of the best in the county, Rensselaer County, not only is she one of the best in the capital region, but she's actually a two-time New York State Champion. She's a national champion. She has got a tremendous amount of academic accolades as well, and she's going to Harvard in just probably in a couple of weeks, I'd imagine. We in Avril Park and Town of Sand Lake couldn't be more proud of her, and that's why we nominated her to be the Outstanding Leader of the Month. And I, we've had the privilege of following her throughout the last couple of years, and it's really, really been a wonderful experience cheering her on. So, congratulations. I'm going to give you this resolution. I got a couple here. I got one for you. I got one for you guys also. And I actually went to college with Alana's mother. She was a gymnast, also another great athlete. All right. So, you want to say a couple of words?
Um.
Why don't you say something?
Um, I guess, thank you guys for the recognition, and I just wanted to give a thank you to Avril Park and the Avril Park School District for making all of this possible and for supporting the track team and having all those honors classes for kids who really want to try something challenging in school. So, thank you, guys.
Wow, quite the honor, huh? Very good. Next, we have P. 34318, Resolution Adjourning to July 10, 2018. No? It's not there?
It's September.
Oh, she moved on. Okay. We're pushing it forward. Okay. We'll go to P. 348, Resolution Honoring the Literacy Volunteers of Rensselaer County Upon the Occasion of Their 15th Anniversary by Legislator Tom Grant. Fifty years. The Literacy Volunteers of Rensselaer County were formed on June 9, 1968. Just if I, if you'll indulge you, just a brief historical perception here, a reference. That was quite a chaotic year. June 9, 1968 was only about two and a half months after the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King. It was only about three days after the assassination of Senator Robert Kennedy. So, quite a turbulent period in our history. And the greatest thing about literacy and literacy volunteers is that it really, it combines the combination of knowledge and empathy, which I think is necessary to function in a civilized society. Once you learn how to read at a certain level, everything seems clear to you at some point, or maybe it doesn't because these issues are so complex. But it enables people to recognize that there's more than just themselves in the world. They're all part of a world community of living and breathing human beings. And also, literacy also bestows upon most people empathy, that you are part of this bigger system. You are more than yourself. You can, you do have the ability to put yourself in other people's shoes, which is very important. Now, 1968 was a pretty turbulent period, and the literacy volunteers formed themselves at that point in Rensselaer County. Some would say today is a very turbulent period. And throughout their 50-year history, the literacy volunteers remain absolutely relevant to our society as exists today. We can always use people who have knowledge and empathy to interact with the other people who they come into contact with. I won't read the resolution either. It says some very nice things, and I'll let you examine that when you, when you get home. But I just want to thank you on behalf of the Rensselaer County Legislature for staying with us for 50 years. My gosh, what an accomplishment. And we have some certificates we'd like to present for you, but I understand somebody would like to say something, at least. A couple of you would like to say something.
I got the short straw. So, I just want to just comment on literacy volunteers. I've been a board member for 10 years. Literacy Volunteers has four full-time staff, a pretty small budget, and affects literally hundreds of people in the community every year, kids, native-born English-language speakers, immigrants. There's a whole range of programs that the organization provides free to anybody that comes into the office doors. So, it's, I always, when I'm talking to folks about the organization, I always say it's the best bang for the buck, social services organization in the capital district because of the impact it has on such a small, small budget. And I will plug the fact that we are celebrating our 50th anniversary on October 5 at the Hilton Garden Inn doing a gala. So, if you would be interested in coming, please check out our website, www.lvorc.org. We would like anybody and everybody to come and help us celebrate our 50 years. So, thank you to Tom for the, for doing this and for the legislature for recognizing us. Thank you.
to our regular legislative meeting. But first, we, this next portion is the public comment on anything, any resolutions that are for tonight. We have one signed up for named Jennifer Pazza. Jennifer, please come down. Welcome, Jennifer. Did I say Pazza right?
Yes. Thank you, Rensselaer County legislators. I'm Jennifer Pazza, a proud homeowner and resident of Troy, and I'm also an engineering professor at RPI. I would like you to support the bill prohibiting discriminatory behavior by county officers. This bill is important so that Rensselaer County stays a welcoming place to all, but especially immigrants. I'm privileged to work with immigrants on a daily basis. They are talented engineers working on challenging and important societal problems, but more importantly, they're kind individuals. I could not do my job without this impressive immigrant workforce. And yes, these immigrants are here legally. However, to attract and retain the best and the brightest from all around the world requires that we have a community that values inclusiveness and diversity. Decisions made about where students and highly skilled foreign workers decide to study, work, and live are influenced by our national and local discussions around immigration and diversity. For example, science and engineering field saw a 6% decrease from the number of international graduate students enrolled in U.S. universities from the fall of 2016 to the fall of 2017. While a lot of factors were at play, one reason I've heard multiple times is that the less-than-welcoming immigrant political rhetoric around immigration, leading these talented individuals to ask, "Am I welcome here?" I, and I hope you, want the answer to their question to be yes. Yes, Rensselaer County is a place that is welcoming to all and wants to attract a highly skilled foreign workforce and student body. Thus, I please want you to support the bill prohibiting discriminatory profiling by county officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And just for your information, that resolution is laying on the desk for 30 days and won't be voted on until the next regular meeting of the legislature in September, not tonight. We also have two other names signed up, but they relate to something other than, other than resolutions that are on the agenda this evening. I welcome them to come back at our meeting next month, public forum, which is the first Wednesday of next month.
Point of order?
Point of order, yes, sir.
I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respectfully request that you suspend the rules of the regular meeting of the county legislature, which is tonight, and enforce Section 19, the rules of county legislature concerning the public forum, as we all know or most of us know. Last Wednesday, at the public forum, the power went out. There were people signed up wanting to speak on an issue that was on the agenda at the time, and they were precluded, but they were stopped from that only because of an issue that had nothing to do with them or us. And out of respect, reasonableness, fair play, I'd like to suspend rules for a couple minutes and let these two people speak.
Well, thank you for, for your request, but the rule's the rule. I have, obviously, we do respect them. We want to hear their opinions. But again, we've had other people who called the legislative chambers asking to speak, and we've denied. So, giving them access to where other people have called and didn't get the opportunity to speak wouldn't be fair to them either. They're more than welcome to come back next month and speak on it then. But thank you. Next, get into our regular monthly meeting. Mr. Harrington.
Mr. Chairman, we dispense with the reading until the minutes of the regular reading of July 10, 2018, approved the minutes of the conference.
That's what I called you for. Usually, there's the pledge first. I'm sorry. There's the pledge allegiance, Mr. Harrington. That's what I was calling you for.
Are you offering the pledge?
Well, no. I'm sorry.
Usually, it's the invocation first and then the pledge, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so do you want to do?
Usually, it's the invocation.
Mr. Grant, the invocation, please.
Guide the people of this land and of all the nations in the ways of justice and peace that we may honor one another and serve the common good. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Subtract the pledge.
Mr. Grimm?
Mr. Grimm, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we'll get back to you, Mr. Harrington.
Clerk, call and roll.
Ms. Ash McPherson.
Yeah.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Bendett.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Mr. Cassell.
Here.
Ms. Doran.
Present.
Mr. Fiaco.
Here.
Mr. Fleming.
Here.
Mr. Grant.
Present.
Mr. Grimm.
Here.
Mr. Harrington.
Present.
Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Leverage.
Here.
Mr. Patieri.
Here.
Mr. Peter.
Here.
Mr. Testman.
Here.
Ms. Sullivan Tita.
Present.
Mr. Weissaki.
Here.
Chairman Stamel.
Here.
19, present.
Okay. Mr. Harrington.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 10, 2018, and approve the minutes of the conference.
Motion made and seconded. All favor?
Aye.
So moved. Local law?
There's one introductory tonight.
One introductory law. Index resolutions, right?
Well, do you want to report on committee yet, or no?
Presentations of petitions are on file. Presentations of communications are on file. Reports of commissions are on file. Departmental reports are on file. Standing committee reports are on file.
Okay.
I'm ready for the index.
Okay. Index resolutions, please.
Number?
P. 34618.
P. 34618, Resolution Honoring Rensselaer County Veteran Ervin Willibert Ruston, introduced by legislator Stamel and the entire legislative body.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
19, ayes.
P. 34718.
P. 34718, Resolution Recognizing and Committing Team Hero for Their Commitment in Service to Their Community, introduced by legislator Ash McPherson and the entire legislative body.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
19, ayes.
So moved.
19, ayes.
P. 34918.
P. 34918, Resolution Commanding P. 349-18, Resolution commending adept healthcare service upon the occasion of their 40th anniversary, introduced by legislators Doran, Grimm, Burns, Fleming, Sullivan-Tita, and the entire legislative body.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. P. 350-18.
P. 350-18, Resolution recognizing Jesse Chapman for his commitment to the residents of Rensselaer County Mental Health Department, introduced by legislators Bendet, Leverage, Peter, and the entire legislative body.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
19 ayes.
P. 351-18.
P. 351-18, Resolution recognizing September 2018 as National Recovery Month in Rensselaer County, introduced by legislators Grant, Testman, and the entire legislative body.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
19 ayes.
P. 351-18.
P. 351-18, Resolution recognizing September 2018 as National Recovery Month in Rensselaer County, introduced by legislators Grant, Testman, and the entire legislative body.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
19 ayes.
P. 352-18.
P. 352-18, Resolution recognizing September 30, 2018, as National Gold Star Mother's Day, introduced by legislators Harrington, Testman, and the entire legislative body.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. P. 353-18.
P. 353-18, Resolution declaring the month of September 2018 in Rensselaer County as a month of remembrance, introduced by legislator Stamel and the entire legislative body.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. P. 354-18.
P. 354-18, A Resolution Turning Rensselaer County Teal in Recognition of Ovarian Awareness Cancer Month, introduced by legislators Grant and the entire legislative body.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. P. 355-18.
P. 355-18, Resolution recognizing September 17 through the 23rd, 2018, as United States Constitution Week in Rensselaer County, introduced by legislator Stamel and the entire legislative body.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
19 ayes.
Moved. P. 356-18.
P. 356-18, Resolution recognizing September 2018 as National Preparedness Month, introduced by legislator Stamel and the entire legislative body.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
19 ayes.
P. 357-18.
P. 357-
If I may?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes.
I'd like, on behalf of the minority office, propose and present an amendment to this-
He's got to call it first, and then you can present the amendment.
He didn't say.
No, he didn't, he didn't actually, he said, "Thank you." Was it read?
Yes.
It wasn't finished read, but wasn't.
Go ahead.
Could you go ahead and just read the resolution?
Please read.
Read the amendment?
It's P. 357-18.
Yeah. P. 357-18, Resolution urging, urging and supporting the city of Troy to seek grant funding from the New York State Office of Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation, or using energy performance contracts for the city of Troy Parks and Pools, introduced by legislator Ash McPherson and the entire legislative body.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to recognize legislator Grimm for purposes of his proposed amendment?
Mr. Grimm, please state your proposal.
I'd like to set this amendment to this resolution. Resolution, I'd like to explain it by amendment. The amendment to this resolution is to add to the resolution suggested that we urge the city of Troy to engage in active negotiations and search for funds for the New York State Office of Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation. And this also goes a step further. In the past, there are certain saving funds that we have here in the county, and some have been used to support communities throughout the county that have been in need or crisis in the, in the past. And we would just like to up this resolution a little bit more, and also call upon the county executive's office, as described in the whereas, to also join us in supporting this amendment. And on the amendment, interestingly enough, I just had a conversation with the mayor of the city of Troy before I came, and he wanted to assure me that the city of Troy has been engaged and in conversation with the entity that is mentioned in the resolution, New York State Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation Office. And in fact, they are now in negotiations. They have also had an engineer's report estimate done on the pools for the city of Troy, and that number is $4 million. But what they're working with, with the state agencies at this point is for funding, and they have gotten to a point where they are into negotiations, and they will need a match. That number I do not have, but that is coming. So which would make this all the more purpose of resolution on our behalf to really kind of step up to the plate and help the citizens of Troy, which I'd like to add is over 30% of our constituency here in Rensselaer County. So I would like to, all the legislators, to consider this. I'd like to have the ball on me to add this to the resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Grimm, the next step is to ask if there's a second amendment.
There's a second.
Is there a second? Mr. Fleming, seconds.
Okay.
Has a copy of the proposed amendment been provided to all the legislators?
No, not till I've seen.
Yes.
Everybody's got a copy now?
Yes.
Okay.
Then at this time, normally, you would have discussion on the proposed amendment, not to the main resolution yet.
Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask a question of order?
Yep.
We have an opportunity to meet with the minority in special rules before this meeting, and I'm just questioning why this resolution or this amendment was not brought up in special rules so that we could have had prepared time for our legislators to review this. So I'm just questioning why this wasn't brought up, when anytime we ever change to any resolution, it's brought up in special rules. So if somebody could explain that to me?
If I may, Mr. Chairman? Well, special rules is for introducing new resolutions, and I mean, it has been said that, you know, the special rules under our new leadership is, is just for pertinent G resolutions. This is a P resolution, of course, and this is protocol, it's part of protocol to offer an amendment on the floor. That's just what we're doing. Let's not get, you know, blindsided here by protocol, even though we follow the protocol, and stick to what the amendment does here. And what it does is it's really making us step up to the plate and become a real player in helping the crisis that's in the city of Troy. Thank you.
Well, with all due respect, Mr. Legislature, we, we really need to take the time to look at this a little bit more thoroughly. This is a little bit more comprehensive than just a one-line amendment that normally we would see. We have to compare the two resolutions, yes?
May I just help clarify, Mr. Chairman? The resolution, you will notice, is in two different fonts.
Yep.
The smaller type font.
I see that.
Are the amended items, if that would help. We did not change any of the original resolution.
So therefore, is the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh whereas that you're looking to amend, seventh and eighth?
The amendment is adding to whereas.
To whereas.
We're defined on the first page.
As far as you know, is there a financial impact to this, to the county?
Well, that's what's defined in the whereas, and that's what I was explaining earlier, Mr. Chairman. Yes, and I've identified the three funds in the whereas here that are savings that the county has and has for years, and we've used them in the past in helping out other municipalities, the tax stabilization funds, one of those.
Well, I, okay.
So it's pretty, it's pretty well defined, just in the whereas.
Yeah, so the problem with it is if it has a finance, financial impact to the, to the county, then it's, it's no longer a P resolution, it's a G resolution, and therefore would, would change the-
This is just the conversation, this is not moving my work lines. This is just, this is just, as is the resolution itself, just urging.
Ah.
If I'd like to take more time to review this, then I would suggest that we focus resolution and move forward tonight and bring it back next month.
Mr. Chairman?
On the question, yes.
Anyways, I'm reading this over briefly as I'm going through it, and I appreciate you taking the time and looking at it, and you can work together on it. My concern is I'm looking at the whereas resolution for the legislation along with the county executive's office's four ways of saving. That's my concern, is what's the funds that you're looking at from the county?
They're defined right here in the, the, the county's funds, the tax stabilization fund, and the 2018 capital project, line H1106 fund.
But you said matching funds of 4 million, did you say?
I said that there were no, there were no numbers on the match. The improvements are estimated to cost $4 million. I don't know what the negotiation is with the state agency at this point, but, you know, anything that could help with that.
Correct. So this is no funds to the county at this time, you're saying? You're not presenting any funds to take-
No, I'm not suggesting any tax saving.
And you're not-
At all. This is just fund, this is just savings that we have.
Could you-
And we have used them in the past for, for other means of balance.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
If I may, I feel more comfortable if we tabled this tonight, but we all had a chance to look at this.
Well, you're just discussing the amendment at this time, there's an underlying resolution.
I think the whole resolution needs to be tabled, just in light. And looked at.
Okay. We're looking at just the amendment.
We have to deal with the amendment.
Sure. So, yes, Mr. Harrington?
No, I would like to suggest that there's no reason not to pass the resolution we have, if we want to come up with a new resolution in addition, and another resolution next month, and we go through the proper channels and the committee, so the committees can take a look at this. I said I'd be a lot more comfortable, so I think we should hold this down tonight, this amendment, and move on, to the consent of the resolution, to come in next month.
Legislature Leverage?
Chairman, the original proposal was to seek grant funding to address the same issues that are being brought up by the minority tonight. I would suggest that we pass the first one, see how the city does in seeking grant funding, and then if there were some gaps, perhaps the minority may introduce something like they did this evening to address those gaps. It seems to be premature to bring this particular suggestion up tonight when we don't know if the other, if the other proposal would be effective in itself. And since we don't know where the funds are going to come from in the second one that they introduced tonight, I would feel more comfortable, just as legislator Bailey said, to be able to hold off on this till we can evaluate that. The first proposal hurts no one, it just seeks funds that we both agree should be sought.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to explain that the city is, the resolution as it stands on the floor without the amendment is moot. The city is already in negotiations with the state agency, so we are urging them to do something that they are already involved with. In fact, they are in negotiation already. So what we're doing now is we're adding to it. No one's going to get hurt. We're not talking about any money here, we're not talking about any tax saving. What we're talking about is to consider using some of our tax stabilization money, which we have in the past to help other communities, and to consider this in a conversation with the city to where we could be helpful. This is simply a resolution, you know, offering, to open up the conversation of help, of assistance to more than a third of the constituency of the county.
Mr. Leverage?
Chairman, I think that since the proposal was already made with the first resolution that we have, I think we should move forward with that particular one to, as I indicated before, to identify if there's a need for this. But there is a difference in the fact that we are presenting jointly the first proposal. Right now, the request is coming from the city of Troy alone. With the resolution that we have put on the floor, we are joining them, both sides in the aisle with Troy, to encourage that to happen. I think that makes a difference for those grant people that are going to look at that request, and that is the purpose of why we're doing this. And since this second proposal does indeed begin to identify funds, I think we need an opportunity to review our records and make sure that we have those available funds if indeed this comes back at a later time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to explain one more time, that the city is already in negotiation with the state agency. So if we were going to do a resolution that was coming from the county, then what it would be then at this point would be urging the state to help the city of Troy.
Correct.
The city, the resolution that we have on the table is for urging the city to get to start negotiations or conversations with the state agency. That has already been done, so I think we should continue this. I mean, this is all a good idea, all of this is a good idea, what needs to happen. You know, we're all concerned about the pools and the residents of the city of Troy. I speak for myself, but I, I hope I'm speaking for everyone. The, but certainly, to open the conversation now that we know that they are doing negotiations with the state agency, and that there is a match funding, and that there's going to be conversations about financial support, then this only makes sense to push this forward. But again, if people are uncomfortable with it, I say we table the whole situation, we come back next month, we define to a resolution. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Mr. Testman?
Mr. Chairman, as what you're saying, and Grimm had mentioned, the city of Troy is currently already in the, in the middle of negotiation and potentially contractual obligations with potential, with state agencies or potential funding. I think the last thing in the world we want to do is jump in board and offer a separate or, or different, you know, source of funding in order to add to confusion. I think it would only be wise to let them experiment and, and continue further with the, with the, with the conversations and the contracts that they're considering right now, and continue with resolution P. 357-18 as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrington?
Can I like to call for a vote on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Need her help.
Sixty-five.
Call for a vote. All those in favor of the amendment?
All those in favor of the amendment?
So that's-
All those against?
It's 14-5 on the amendment.
Amendment failed, now we're back to the resolution.
Yes, and just my point on, on the amendment, you know, we've worked on this for over a month, we've had committee meetings on it, as all we had to do was bring this up during committees and discuss it. You know better than most how the process works. We should have, we should have talked about this ahead of time, to throw a last-minute resolution or amendment to the resolution in this forum before, with so much detail, not having an opportunity to review it, is really pretty much like a backdoor deal. I think we do all want the same thing, and I think we'll get to that. We all want to help the situation out. We, as the county, have been doing that, working with Troy in order to try, try to resolve this issue in a number of ways. One, wanting them to, and helping them to, to fix this problem, and two, trying to find a place for the kids to go, at least for this current summer, as we're doing up in Grafton in conjunction with CDTA. So I think we all want to get there at the same time. Yes?
I would just like to say that, from my understanding, the minority voted this down in committee, which was sad for me. I really am happy that you are looking at this now. I wish you would have looked at it further in committee. As far as the mayor saying that he's already in negotiations, I sent a letter to him on Ju-, July 19, he's never responded. So if he's in negotiations, I am thrilled to hear this, because I've been asking since 2016 for a plan to find out what's going on. And again, I would have really liked if you would have passed this through committee instead of trying to put it through this way. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
No, I think we, we don't need to carry this on any further, don't, we're going to go to the, to regular resolution.
I'd like to have one last word on this, if I may. Mr. Chairman, we did nothing here on the floor tonight that wasn't protocol, and I would prefer, to Mr. Danbury, if we can, we have presented an amendment to a resolution which is in perfect order for the, for the county legislature.
I agree, it just needs more review.
Okay, but there should be no reprimand coming from the floor or from the chairman on the procedure that happens here tonight.
I'm not saying, it's, it's an unusual procedure, I didn't say that was, the protocol was wrong, but there's a way that we could, that we normally work as a team, work together in order to resolve issues, that there was a one-sided team in, at practice here. We went through this resolution in regular committee, and we were all the same understanding of what was to come out of it. Now, at the last minute, you throw something at us and expect us to jump at it. That's not going to happen.
We're not throwing something, Mr. Chairman, we're asking to come together.
And we will.
During this resolution, we're just peaking it up.
Well, the, the amendment was defeated on the main res- resolution.
We're not throwing something, Mr. Chairman, we're asking to come together.
And we will.
Bringing this resolution, we're just peaking it up.
Well, the amendment was defeated on the main resolution.
On P 35718, are you ready to call, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
14-5.
Resolution P 53, 35818.
P 35818, resolution urging Governor Cuomo to reserve his, reverse his directive that discourages financial institutions, insurance companies, and banks from doing business with the National Rifle Association, fish and game clubs, and other gun-related businesses, introduced by legislators Stammel, Hoffman, Leverage, Harrington, Bailey, Bendet, Casal, Fiaco, Grant, McPherson, Patieri, Peter, Testman, and Wysocki.
On the question. Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, excuse my reading this, I write some notes, and at my age, I don't make notes, I make something out. This resolution is not just about the NRA. The governor's directors targeted the NRA, there are negative impacts on the, on fish and game clubs, our gun clubs, our gun-related small businesses in the rest of the county. When the gov-, when the governor singles out one type of business and threatens to put them out of business, you have to ask yourself, who's next? This action by the governor resulted in lawsuits that will be costly to New York State at the time when we should be investing in infrastructure and not in attorneys. New York State issues licenses to hunters, but the governor's action has now caused the fish and gun clubs, game clubs, where hunters practice their sport, to be left without insurance. And there are a number of them that have already been notified that they're not going to have coverage. Training and practice is important, is an important part of gun ownership. Why does he want to stop the people from practicing safety? New York State spends almost $1 million a year just to raise pheasants for the sole purpose of being hunted. The state encourages women and children and everyone else to take part in the traditional sport of pheasant hunting, but now doesn't want to let them learn how to safely use arms, firearms, and licenses, and an insurance, and an insured, and an insured hunting club. This makes no sense to me. I'm very disappointed in this, in his actions, and this is why we support this res-, I support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fiaco.
I also support this resolution. I belong to a Bailey Fish and Game Club in Rensselaer County, and we're having trouble financially because of the cost of what the insurance is going on. Unless they're going to let us do over state lines for this stuff, this is difficult for us to, to maintain the club. I also would vote in a firm of this.
Anything else? Mr. Leverage.
I would just like to say that the firearms and hunter safety programs across New York State, most of them are conducted in these types of venues.
Yes, they are, and sponsored by these clubs as well. Yes, it is also a concern of mine, has been a concern of mine as, as a member of, obviously, the NRA, but it's not just the NRA that's a target here. It's, the insurance companies are being targeted because the governor wants to use his strong arm to, to turn around and tell these insurance companies not to do business with the NRA or anybody affiliated with them. So therefore, it not only hurts, hurts the, the small businessman, but it hurts the organizations as mentioned before. So, so that, that is also a concern. And, and what it also does is, is it prevents those classes that the state and the, and the NRA sponsor for the young hunters as well, in order to be safely taught on a, on a, in a club organization that provides this type of training to them on a regular basis as, as well. So with that, I, I think the governor, I'd like to see the governor reverse his decision. This is strong-arming the insurance companies, and these organizations aren't allowed to go outside the state to get other insurances, so, so therefore, they're bottlenecked, there's no place for them to go. And why should they have to hold the liability? We all know that maybe an accident could happen, one way, shape, form, or another. That's why we all have insurance. That's why we all have auto insurance, you know, and just in case we have to get an accident, the state mandates that. But, you know, the governor turns around and he stops these people who are using firearms for going out and getting insurances, because they want to protect the, the liability of their organization and their membership. So that, that's disconcerting as well. And if it was not, if it's not the insurance company, as was mentioned earlier, what's next? If he doesn't like race car drivers, or speed car drivers, as we, we've talked about in the past, racing, is he going to go after the racing car industry or some other industry out there? It's selective enforcement, and it's something that we can't tolerate. Would that, I call for a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
14-5. G 35918, resolution authorizing acceptance of an award from the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services in amending the 2018 Rensselaer County Adopted Budget District Attorney, introduced by legislators Testman, Grant, and Doran.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. G 36018.
G 36018, resolution authorizing transfer of a parcel of real property to Wayne C. Heron and Nancy Heron as trustees, Highway Department, introduced by legislators Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. G 36118.
G 36118, resolution authorizing the conveyance of certain real property to former owners listed below who paid tax arrears in full prior to scheduling of the auction sale, Bureau of Finance, introduced by legislators Leverage, Stammel, and Grim.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
G 36218.
G 36218, resolution authorizing amending an agreement for revenue cycle management software, Van Rensselaer Manor, introduced by legislators Grant, Testman, Sullivan, Tita.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. G 36318.
G 36318, resolution authorizing agreements for youth development programs, Unified Family Services, Youth Services, introduced by legislators Harrington, Testman, and Burns.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
18 ayes, one abstention, Ms. Hoffman.
G 36418.
G 36418, resolution amending the 2018 Rensselaer County Adopted Budget Unified Family Services, Youth Services, introduced by legislators Harrington, Testman, and Burns.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
G 36518.
G 36518, resolution authorizing a contract for the purchase of dishwashing detergents, Bureau of Central Services, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Sullivan, Tita, Stammel, and Grim.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
G 36618.
G 36618, resolution authorizing change order to the electrical contract for Public Safety Building Emergency Operations Center Improvement Project, Department of Engineering, introduced by legislators Testman, Grant, and Doran.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
G 36718.
G 36718, resolution amending, resolution, G 53417, authorizing an agreement for security guard services at the Van Rensselaer Manor Nursing Home, Rensselaer County Office Building, Flanagan Square Building, Rensselaer County Department of Social Services, probation and youth, Bureau of Central Services, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Sullivan, Tita, Stammel, and Grim.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
G 36818.
G 36818, resolution amending the 2018 Rensselaer County Adopted Budget Mental Health, introduced by legislators Grant, Testman, and Sullivan, Tita.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
G 36918.
G 36918, resolution authorizing an agreement for clinical services with the Lansingburg Central School District Department of Mental Health, introduced by legislators Grant, Testman, Sullivan, Tita.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes. 18 ayes, one abstention, Ms. Sullivan, Tita.
G 37018.
G 37018, resolution authorizing a sublease agreement with the Community Care Physicians PC Department of Mental Health, introduced by legislators Grant, Testman, Sullivan, Tita.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
G 37118.
G 37118, resolution authorizing amendments to agreements in amending the 2018 Rensselaer County Adopted Budget Department of Mental Health, introduced by legislators Grant, Testman, and Sullivan, Tita.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. G 37218.
G 37218, resolution authorizing an agreement with Capitol District Transportation Authority, CDTAs, amending the 2018 Rensselaer County Adopted Budget Department of Youth, introduced by legislators Harrington, Testman, and Burns.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. G 37318.
G 37318, resolution authorizing contracts with various municipalities for snow and ice removal, Highway Department, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Sullivan, Tita, Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. G 37418.
G 37418, resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for bituminous asphalt paving, heating, and scarifying Highway Department, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Sullivan, Tita, Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. G 37518.
G 37518, resolution authorizing purchases from the New York State Comprehensive Liquid Bituminous Materials Contract Highway Department, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Sullivan, Tita, Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. G 37618.
G 37618, resolution confirming the appointment of a member to the Rensselaer County Civil Service Commission, introduced by legislators Stammel, Hoffman, Harrington, Grim, and Doran.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Wait, I got three noes.
Oh.
So that's 16-3.
G 37718.
G 37718, resolution confirming the appointment of a member to the Rensselaer County Civil Service Commission, introduced by legislators Stammel, Hoffman, Harrington, Grim, and Doran.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Same three.
So moved.
So that's 15 ayes, one abstention, Mr. Patieri, and three noes.
G 37818.
G 37818, resolution authorizing purchase of equipment, Highway Department, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Sullivan, Tita, Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. G 37918.
G 37918, resolution confirming the appointment of Carl J. Kemp III as county attorney, introduced by legislators Stammel, Hoffman, Leverage, Harrington, Bailey, Bendet, Casal, Fiaco, Grant, McPherson, Patieri, Peter, Testman, and Wysocki.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
You too? So I got three noes. 16-3.
G 38018.
G 38018, resolution amending the 2018 Rensselaer County Adopted Budget Public Defender, introduced by legislators Testman, Grant, and Doran.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. G 38118.
G 38118, resolution authorizing a contract with Hope House, Inc., in amending the 2018 Rensselaer County Adopted Budget Mental Health, introduced by legislators Grant, Testman, Sullivan, Tita.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
So moved. G 38218.
P 38218, resolution in memoriam of Reverend Cornelius Clark, introduced by legislators Sullivan, Tita, Grim, Doran, Burns, Fleming, and the entire legislative body.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
P 38318.
P 38318, resolution adjourning the August 14, 2018 legislative meeting in memory of William Littgoe, introduced by legislator Stammel and the entire legislative body.
All in favor? Aye. So moved.
19 ayes.
G 38418.
G 38418, resolution amending the 2018 Rensselaer County Adopted Budget Aging, introduced by Chairman Stammel.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
19 ayes.
Just have a question for you, Blurt.
Sure.
On 370, 379, I fancy behind you, really, you mentioned the names, did you raise a no or a yes on that?
I had you as a no, is that correct?
No, I'd like to be the yes.
Okay, so that, the correction to the vote would be 17-2.
Yeah, you said no, but you didn't raise your hand. Yes, yeah.
Did you ask me if I do when I said no?
Sorry.
That hand language, okay. So motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second in? Motion made and second in? Thank you, everybody. Next meeting is the second Tuesday of September.